I'd like to maybe have you stand up first and pledge your beliefs.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the British, Spanish, the Federation, our God, indivisible, the Lord, and the Justice God.
Thank you all for coming. I would like to start off with our senior team's report.
Thank you. I just want to note that our student liaison Chris sent a very nice email. He's unable to be here tonight. Some demands around college admissions are wrapping up this week and I told her to take care of that business. So he'll be here in January. So let's see, tonight, I just wanted to bring to your attention that we are in the process of revising the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, in the State Department and the Police Department. And the impetus for that really is a change in the law, state law. Massachusetts passed a criminal justice reform law last spring. And that law included new requirements for MOUs between schools and police departments. And it, the MOU now has to address particular roles and functions of the school resource officer. So we have taken a look at a model MOU that is a place for districts to consider that came out from the Attorney General's Office and the Department of Education. And I've compared that to our existing MOU. I've had our legal counsel review everything and give me her input. And I've met with Chief Silva to sort of discuss what needs to happen. So we're kind of taking a look at a draft at the moment and hopefully in the next week or so, we'll be able to finalize something. It seems to me that though we will have to make some changes to the language and what is included in the MOU, I don't think that those changes really reflects much of a change in practice. Or certainly not a change in how we kind of think of the role of the SRO already, but we need to codify it. When you look at the requirements under the law, I'll give you an example of the kind of thing that they're getting at here. It's clear to me that whatever changes are happening are in response to some concern that has cropped up somewhere at some point, right? So, language that's required. It needs to say, "Under state law, the SRO shall not serve as a school disciplinarian, as an enforcer of school regulations, or a place of school-based mental health providers. And the SRO shall not use police powers to address traditional school disciplines, including non-godly disruptive activities." And I read that and I think, yes, I mean, we never would suggest otherwise, but I imagine that that's a concern. So we're working on that. Next, I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are with the development of FY '20 budget. So our cost center leaders submitted their budget request to us right before Thanksgiving. And we've had some individual discussions with those folks. And then in Central Office, we compiled all those requests and reviewed it, had, excuse me, sort of an initial meeting about it. Last week, I think, last week, we met as a district leadership team with our administrative council and ran through a process to all see everybody's requests collectively, to understand where those requests were coming from, to go back to our district improvement strategy, and about some of the things we're working on, and really to start to make some choices and to identify some priorities as a team. I think that was a good process. It's a fantastic team, honestly. And they really do take a pre-K-12 perspective. We had a lot of discussion, divided into groups. And what we found is that there's consensus around what the priorities are and what the choices are that need to be made. So that was helpful. We did discuss the input that school committee gave us about your priorities as well. So what we heard from you last month was a focus on middle school curriculum leadership. You'll see that reflected in our proposed budget. We've been talking about this issue of is there a way to expand elementary coding? We'll talk a little bit about that tonight. We are examining library staffing at the elementary level, comparing it to our P. And then we also heard an issue about continuing to address the learning needs of students with disabilities, particularly in middle school science. So all of those things we heard and we are trying to address. So we've had several follow-up meetings in Central Office and we have a final meeting with the administrative council next week. And at that point, we'll be ready to start putting pen to paper and be ready to present something in January. In the meantime, the other moving part here is our conversations with the middle school side. So there is a budget steering committee that includes people from Town Hall and us. Charlie, Keith and I met with budget steering again just yesterday, two days ago, I'm losing track, but sometime this week.
We're always together.
We're always together. So we met with them just to get a sense of sort of the financial picture, you know, big picture, and how we're moving forward and just to stay in communication about what we're all thinking so that we can all hit our marks together and there are no ugly surprises later on in the process. You know, as is similar to the last couple of years, they've kind of indicated that a 3% increase, I think would be a nice target for us. That's an increase that feels sustainable moving forward. You know, I would take this opportunity to remind everybody that we haven't had an operational override in Westwood since FY '08, which is pretty remarkable. There were some tough years back around FY '10, '11, '12 where we had, I think, a 0% increase, a 1% increase, right? Those were lean. And then we got a big boost to the base a couple of years ago in FY '16, '17 when the revenue from the University Station came online. Those were like 5% and 6% increases. The last two years, the School Department came in at 3.3 and 3.4. And I think we're on track to be in that neighborhood again. I don't think we can come in at 3. I think we can come in under 4. We'll call that 3-ish, right? So we'll be presenting something to you.
If any of the committee members are interested in what the town is saying, would be happy to share with you. Once a week, you want to get into what they've shared with us, you know, projections and rates of taxes and things coming from the University Station. But if that's, if you have an interest, then we have to share that with you.
I think we're in a very good place right now with our relationship on this issue. I think everybody's working in a really transparent and collaborative way. So that was great.
They've been very supportive, you know, of what we're doing. Also, Keith and I, destruction coming down the road sometime. So I think it's very supportive of what we're trying to do.
Can I ask a question? When you had the input, a couple initiatives. One was the security audit and the other was the social-emotional curriculum review. Will you have that in mind for January?
Yeah, we do. So the social-emotional curriculum review has or is wrapping up?
Yeah, we've got a couple meetings on the books to wrap up in January. But in terms of budget impact, we actually think we can take the initial steps that we're going to need within our current operating budget. We will likely be looking at sort of a year down the road, some potential staffing impact. But for this year, the recommendations are going to follow along along with training, really trying to build our skill set before we bring in more people.
The security audit, unfortunately, the answer is, I don't know that we are going to have that completed in time to analyze the budget. And so, you know, the way that the warrant article was presented last spring, whatever the differences between the cost of the audit and what was appropriated can be used to start implementing recommendations. And there is going to be some here, not a lot. But, you know, if there was something that we had to really do immediately, we could try to hop on that. But I don't, I don't think we are going to have more time, unfortunately. So.
Any other questions?
Okay, great. All right. And so next, I'm actually going to turn it over for a couple minutes to Steve and Allison, but I don't know who. I guess Steve, mostly Steve.
Yeah, Allison can jump in. If you'd like. So, under Emily's leadership, over the summer, we released the Strategy for District Aggravation. And that document has four objectives, one of which is meaningful learning experiences, which is at the head of this slide. And for each of the learning objectives, there are three priorities. So for this objective, I've listed two of the priorities. And I've selected those two because they tie directly with this action step, which are embedded within these priorities called Invest in Aid Options for Expanding Coding and Makerspaces at the Elementary Level. So that's what I'm here to talk about because I want to make sure it's clear that it's aligned with the district's goals and strategy for this year beyond. So one of the reasons why this was something that we decided we wanted some attention to is we had a very successful first year with the third grade coding special last year. We did some parent surveys, we surveyed students. It was overwhelming support for the program. And when I asked a question about whether or not there would be interest in expanding coding in grades four and five, there was overwhelming interest, which is good. It's also a challenge because now we have to figure out how to do that. And speaking of challenges, as we look at expanding coding, there are some inherent challenges with doing that at the elementary level. For example, there's schedule challenges, there are time constraints, and there are just competing demands. So we were able to get the third grade coding special to work largely because we were able to find some special time and move some things around to really essentially create a dedicated segment of time for all third graders to attend the special. In fourth and fifth, we have the music program kind of ramps up. And that, that opportunity just doesn't present itself. So we are, we're looking for ways to, again, expand coding in grades four and five to give some continuity as kids go to the middle school. So they have a lot of prerequisite skills for lots of things at the middle school, including the engineering, computer science curriculum. So the logical place to start was with the ITCs, partly because they're doing coding in grade three, but they're also doing it in lots of other grades, pretty much every other grade.
Steve, that's one. The right ITC is?
Instructional Technology Coach. And we have one, being Mary Colmer from the Sheen School, and Martha Jones are here. So she does some great work at both of those schools. And she does the coding at the Sheen School. So the ITCs and the Library Media Specialists have been doing a lot of work already with Makerspaces, which is really a broad term for making things. It could be building circuits, it could be taking a toaster apart and trying to figure out what, what makes it work. Or building something out of construction paper or cardboard or sticks or whatever it may be. So it's a, it's a very inquiry-based, hands-on kind of experience for kids. And in fact, the work that the ITCs are doing with the coding and then the work that the Library Media Specialists do with Makerspaces really dovetailed nicely. And so we really want to see how we can kind of bring those two groups together to identify ways we can kind of address this desire to move beyond and give this experience in grades four and five. So we brought both groups together during the November 7th release day, the brainstorm ideas. And we came out of that meeting with several ideas. And I wanted to kind of list three things that we're thinking about. So the first is to essentially ask the ITCs and librarians to collaborate and try to come up with some experiences where the both groups are providing that for students during the library time in either grade four or grade five. So they're working on that now. We're essentially piloting it this year. So I'll give you two examples. Again, one is for Mary. She's working on, at the Sheen School, the Dewey Dash, which is programming a robot to find a particular book based on the Dewey system. But it also includes measurement and a direct connection to math standards in the curriculum. So there's a lot going on here and I'm looking forward to seeing how that plays out whenever it comes to fruition. But that's something that they're working on. Another one is in grade four at Martha Jones. There's a book series called Choose Your Own Adventure, where apparently, I just learned this today, the reader assumes the role of the protagonist and makes choices to determine the main character's actions, actions and the plot's outcome. And so building on this very popular children's series, from what I understand, the ITC at Martha Jones and librarian are working on using Scratch, the programming language, to essentially create one of these choose your own adventure projects with the kids. So.
Is that still popping?
I heard that's like 1978.
Oh, I'm so old. So I wasn't reading though. Anyway, so then that's just two examples of a number of things that are being worked on. We're going to take a look at that over the course of the year, see how it plays out.
So Steve, those lessons will be implemented during fourth grade library class? Is that what I hear you say?
Correct. Or potentially fifth grade. So whatever, seems appropriate and works. So that's one thing, that collaboration during library time. We also have four kind of content-specific release days this year, all in elementary, science, math, a number of things. And I think two have happened already.
Yeah, one has happened already.
One has happened.
The second's coming up in January.
Right. So in the spring, we have a fifth grade teacher at Downey and in the ITC at Downey that are going to be offering the course during that time titled Code Beyond the Third Grade Special. And we have a number of fourth and fifth grade teachers that will attend that. The goal of that professional development is to give the fourth and fifth grade teachers the experience as a student, what it's like to be in a coding class, and also to see how some of these ideas can be incorporated directly into the curriculum. Because honestly, I think that if there's a way to get it into the curriculum, that it's just a two-for-one, you know, it's supporting the curriculum, but it's also giving kids opportunities to have these other experiences. So that's the second thing. And then the third thing is to kind of pull together some educators, most likely ITCs and librarians, over the summer to debrief this work and look towards scaling things up a little more for 2019, 2020. So I envision some professional development over the, or curriculum time over the summer where some PD is developed for next fall and some curriculum materials as well, to see how we can try to start embedding this work in the classroom itself. So there's a lot to be seen, but we're going to take a lot of notes this year and kind of with an eye towards scaling this up for the following school year. All of this really falls under this, what you see on the screen, this idea of authentic student-centered learning. These, the coding and the Makerspaces are just fertile ground for that kind of experience. But there are other experiences in Westwood that address those same ideas. And I'm going to turn it over to Allison because she has some really interesting examples. The first screen, this is just a picture of coding. So I won't say too much about that. But this is students in Deerfield working on the Lego robots. The program is on the Chromebook and they use Bluetooth connectivity to essentially send the program down to the, to the Lego robot and tell it to do whatever the program says it needs to do. So then again, that's just one example of what it looks like to be in a coding class in third grade. And then the other slide is Allison's.
Yeah, I wanted to incorporate a couple additional things that give you a sense of what some of the inquiry-based instruction that looks like is, looks like outside of coding in the library too. So all over the district, we have these classroom laboratories cropping up. And this is also an initiative rolling out of some professional development we're doing this year, where teachers are setting aside a small part of the, part of the classroom that kids can visit during transition time, just to sort of explore a particular question. So the question on the left side of the page here is, you know, how do you make a homemade thermometer? So these are all sort of examples of things kids have sort of put together. On the right side is, after you pick a plant, is it still alive? Is the question. And they're, you know, experimenting with that. So these are just little setups in the back of the class. Kids pop in and out at various points during the day. And it's an opportunity to just sort of expand beyond the general curriculum. The next slide shows kind of, some of this work is going on at the middle school as well. Our seventh grade science classrooms are involved in a Harvard University forest study in the woods outside of Thorson Middle School. So they're actually going out into the woods and documenting animal and plant life out there, kind of tracking it. There's some great pictures. This is off of Mike McCarthy's website. It's a really cool project where they're kind of rolling out their slaves and doing some firsthand data collection. And then finally, just to bring it back around to our librarians, Steve mentioned Makerspace. They've got this kind of structure that's not quite full-on Makerspace, which is kind of anything goes. It's a little more structured. But they're trying to have more inquiry-based types of activities going on in that library environment. So on the left side here, this is this really cool project where they integrated with a biography project that kids were doing. So they were doing research. They created a little board game that has a circuit built into the board game that lights up once you finish the whole thing. It's kind of cool. So there's a little tiny engineering piece. And then on the right was, kids were challenged to make their own, they had learned about the leaning tower of Pisa. They had to make their own leaning tower. And here's some gentlemen who were actually quite successful. So it has to be, they had a height requirement and then it has to have a leaning to it. So to be able to do both, I don't know exactly what the intention is, but they seem to be pulling it off. So a couple examples there of the types of things that are going on. And I think it's, it's all collaboration. I think libraries everywhere are starting to shift away from kind of the type of experience that maybe I had at the library, which is you would go and check out a book and maybe listen to something read to you, and that was about it, or do book research. They still do that, but they're doing a lot of other things as well. And so this is great opportunity to bring folks together to capitalize on all those new things going on.
First of all, congratulations on all the creative thinking you're doing. This sounds, you know, all of it sounds wonderful. The question I have is, I know we push the envelope here. And so sometimes we're looking at who else is doing something we can learn from. The app where, so my question is, are there other towns that are as innovative and creative that we can begin to share and learn from? And we'll do this summer of education in bringing in other people who are trying to do what we're doing. Just because I think that, I'm sure there's a few out there that are trying to push it. And I just think that would be great if we could figure out, you know, in addition to our own creative people, are there others that we can learn from? I think that'd be great. The data collection around Thurston sounds like a great thing. And I know we've done it in the past collaborations with Hail. And I know years ago, they used to have a program, after school, when my kids would come home, you know, they're tracking foxes or something. I didn't, I couldn't believe what they're learning just by having creative instructors out there. So I think, building on that, I think there might be a lot of innovative things at Hail to, you know, to go out and plot an acre of land, everything that's there, that kind of thing. I think that'd be a great resource to draw on for that kind of, you know, reaching out to, not just for animals, but the habitats and all that kind of stuff. But I think this is a terrific effort. And I think of other things we might be able to do to help you. But any other questions we have?
No, I'm just amazed at the evolution of learning. Just, you talked about fourth and fifth grade and how much it has changed in the last five years. It's tremendous. So some nice hard work.
You've done some great work. The ITCs and the librarians are really, the animals are really pushing the envelope and coming up. It's really interesting stuff. So.
Is, is the idea that if we enhance this program in the fourth and fifth grade, that eventually the curriculum for computer science and engineering at the sixth, seventh, and eighth is going to be revised or looked at?
Yes, I would say for sure. I mean, I think the key is, is that common experience because we've had a lot of coding, we've had Makerspaces happening for several years now. And I think the grade three coding is a shining example of really looking at it from a district-wide. We want everyone to have this common experience. And we're working on that in grades four and five. And to your point, if, if they're learning that much more, that's going to change what they come up to the.
It'll change, it'll change the high school.
Yes. And, you know, there's, there are standards that the state has put forth. They're really pushing computer science, digital literacy, all that stuff. You asked about those schools. I would argue that Westwood is under the airtight that comes to a lot of this. And, you know, I think that it's, I, it's really exciting to see where that's going to go. And in five years from now, you know, what kind of skills are our kids going to have? And how big is this program going to look like?
I visited the third grade about three years ago. And what was fascinating is, high school kids were teaching the third graders. And they were so proud to have a high school kid. The next year I went and it was the fifth graders teaching the third graders. And somebody took a picture and it was my granddaughter teaching Tony's daughter. So the second grader said, I got a big time. I got a fifth grader teaching grade. And it was, but, you know, now our high school of body is, has been winning all these. Is there any potential in the future as we're thinking of innovative, creative things to get, take advantage of? But those kids have learned it when they've learned it along the way. Maybe add computers at home on their second, you know, to take advantage of that skill set that we have within the system on how might some of that be, you know, made available in the fifth to sixth grade. I mean, I think there's a lot of that, you know, teaching within the system of kids, I think it might have a lot of potential.
I think everything's on the table. We've had success with that in the past, sort of something like that going forward.
Well, thanks for a bunch. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just going to continue on here with the MSBA project update. So I included some information in your packet for you. There have been two big things that have happened since our last meeting. The first is that thanks to Keith's efforts, we have submitted our maintenance and capital planning record to the MSBA. Sort of a big deliverable for the eligibility period. So that's been submitted. We haven't heard anything back from them yet about that. So we're waiting to hear back from them, see if they have any feedback about that. It's an important document because that, the information we submitted may have some bearing on what our eventual reimbursement rate is. It's one area where you can kind of get bonus points. So it's been around how you maintain your buildings. And we do a good job with that. So we're hopeful that that will be fruitful. So fingers crossed on that. And then secondly, you know, at our last meeting, we talked about the fact that Keith, Maia, Charlie and I, along with some folks from the town, had gone in for our first in-person meeting with the MSBA. I said in my memo too that that was in November. It actually was October 29th. But, and so at our last meeting, we decided that a couple of us, so Joseph and Keith and I, would get together to further process what had happened at that meeting and think about what we needed to get back to the MSBA. So we did that. We got some good input. And we had a follow-up conference call with the MSBA this past Friday. Keith, Charlie and I were on that call. So what they had required of us to finish out our eligibility period, we had to submit to them some very, very broad parameters for what we want to study in the feasibility study. And I had found that puzzling and I had asked a lot of questions about that because I'm saying, well, how do we know that? Isn't that what the feasibility study is for? I think we got some very helpful clarification on Friday where we said, this is what we're thinking. And I think we were even getting too granular compared to what they need. They needed really big picture, which I found very reassuring. That made a lot more sense to me. So we have, have given them some information and they indicated that we had hit the mark. So just to remind you, because our application for the MSBA was submitted for Hamlin, because we can only submit for one school, we were invited in for Hamlin. because we can only submit for one school, we were invited in for Hamlin. And so any eventual project with the MSBA now has to take care of Hamlin. They won't consider it if it doesn't take care of Hamlin. We had been told that once you get invited in, you can broaden the conversation and talk about other schools. That is true, and we have done that. What we now have clarity on, I think, is that the MSBA, in terms of their budget, the information we submitted to them, that they are able to help us out with a project that would take care of Hamlin and another elementary school. But I think it's equally clear that it would not take care of all three elementary schools. So the amount of funding that they have budgeted to help Westwood wouldn't take care of a project of that scope, which is good to know at this juncture. I would note also that to come up with one project that consolidated all three buildings, I'm not sure if there would be community will for that either. So that's where we are. So what we have told them is in the feasibility study, we would want to look at options that address the needs of the existing Hamlin school plus account for projected enrollment increases. And in fact, they're pretty clear that communities need to study that option, just taking care of this one school, so that we can really look at... Look at the cost of that as compared to some kind of consolidation. So that would be one bucket. The other is options that involve consolidating Hamlin and Deerfield. And then the third would be options that involve consolidating Hamlin and Sheen. You can see Hamlin is in all of those. Clearly, there are a whole bunch of different possibilities within each of those three broad parameters. And that's what the feasibility study is about, is to start then thinking about, well, is that meaningful, the nitty-gritty? You know, I keep saying to people, it's called feasibility study for a reason, right? We may study options and think, that's a non-starter. We can't do that. Or clearly, this one's better than the other. So with that, once we get voted into the feasibility study, we can start taking a look at that. And of course, that just to remind people is also the phase in which we really start the community engagement process, where the school committee develops the education plan with input from the community. So that will be a big, big, big process. So we gave them those three things. And with that, we've given them everything we need to give them for the eligibility phase. They told us that within the next couple of weeks, we're going to get a letter from them, that they call the design enrollment letter, that will start to sort of memorialize all the things that we've talked about so far. We've done this on a timeline where there will still be time to have further discussions with them and engage in more back and forth if there's anything in that letter that we think doesn't match our understanding or that we're not comfortable with. And then we will... We need to execute that letter. Once that happens, we can request to be on their February board meeting to get voted into feasibility, which would be the big, unfold hurdle to have... So that's where we are.
We also asked if we could use the work that was done, like three years ago, in January. They said, yes, just updated, you know. So a lot of that... The buildings haven't, you know, that, they haven't changed still. The pipes are still lit up. So it's a lot of work that already has been done that we could draw on and say, there's no problem with that.
Yeah, we would have to update sort of the cost estimates because it was four years ago. So, yeah, so that's important. I think we have a good foundation that we can build on. So I don't know, Charlie and May are both on the call. Are there anything else that you think...
No, I think that we came, at least I came away from the call, comforted by the fact that these three options are so broad that will be... My concern was even though we were solid for Hamlin, we have issues with the other schools. And I wanted to make sure we took a comprehensive look at all of the issues of the school. And I think that because our options are so broad and we did do a, you know, we involved every school in some sort of permutation, that we are going to be able to do this sort of comprehensive look at all three schools to the best that we can. And that was really what I hoped we could do within this feasibility base. So I felt very good about that coming up the call.
And they are supportive. The support is pretty helpful, the suggestions that they're making. And I think it's a tribute to all the work that was done before, you know, even getting started to where we are now. And we need to... A lot of credit for getting us to just have them looking at us as a realistic thing. And they appreciate all the work that's been done.
So I have... I've updated the long-range financial planning committee. That's the group that kind of thinks, you know, big picture for the town. And also updated the town facilities task force. Tony and Carol were at that meeting as well. And the executive function group, who are all the department heads of town. So everybody is fully briefed on where we are at this point. And we wrote a letter to the community that we put out on our school, the serve, to all parents. We published it in the town newsletter that I think has six or seven boxes at this point. And it was also emailed today to the Westwood Wire, the serve, the town electronic. So we are, you know, making every effort to make sure that everyone knows what's happening with this process every step of the way. The letter in order to make the newsletter deadline, I had to write it before our conference call on Friday. So it's not quite the latest and greatest, but that's what the video of this means.
So maybe... So when they saw it solve for the Hamlin, obviously, we districting the fungibility. I mean, does that literally mean, I mean, there's 220 kids for the Hamlin. So what is that? Yeah, I mean, it's not like literal... And I just couldn't understand it.
Yeah, no, it isn't literally like one-to-one correspondence. The kids get... No, not at all. No, not at all. So, I mean, really, they're just talking about, I mean, they're... We couldn't leave the current building there and then go do something else, right? I mean, it's got to include Hamlin. And when we say solve for Hamlin, they don't care where Hamlin is, right? So very hypothetically, you could consolidate Hamlin and Deerfield on the Deerfield site, and they would still say that's the Hamlin project as long as the Hamlin building doesn't exist. Yeah.
Any other question? We talked about preschool, is that out or is that... Could that be done?
Yeah. So they won't consider the preschool in terms of their enrollment.
Okay.
Think you're... Right? That's what the issue is. Now, I mean, one of the things that we've talked about is, once we figure out all this, at some point, we have a building. And once it's our building, we can decide to do whatever we want with our resources, right? This is really about the design enrollment.
And that's what's driving this whole process, is the enrollment numbers. And the amount that we're going to get from KSCA.
And if we go back to our consultants, I mean, there was a decent difference. I mean, it may not matter because of the MSBA, but what did they... Did they have any feedback?
So we have not done that. We did get some input from, you know, Tim LaFati, who has... His company's been the OPM for a lot of building projects with MSBA. He said he would know us and also... And we sat down and asked him some questions. And he said that he was not surprised to see that the MSBA numbers were different from the NASTIC numbers. Part of it is apparently enrollment projections is like part art and science and maybe more art. But he also said that he has noticed that trend, that the MSBA projections have tended to be a bit higher.
How many did they get per, right? One district?
There may have been one district where, you know, they had to revise sort of too far down the road. So we may be benefiting from that at this stage.
So at least at this point, they're projecting more than less.
Right. Yes. Or is that...
Remembering higher than...
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Don't worry about all the work.
I just wanted to mention a quick thing here, which is, two months ago, you know, we said that we're not renewing the cell tower release of the school. We have communicated that to AT&amp;T. They are aware. If folks see people up there doing work on that tower, it's because within their existing contract, they do have the legal right to update equipment. And I understand that they're about to do that. So I just don't want anyone to think something's going on when they see that. That's all it is.
They're updating existing...
Yeah. And they have told us that they would like to exercise that option, even understanding that we have told them we're going to break the lease. Not break the lease, not renew the lease. So that's that. And then I just want to acknowledge, if you didn't get to see the Rescue and Jessica webcast that was at the Downey school, was that yesterday?
That was Tuesday.
Tuesday. You really can't keep track of my history. If you go on YouTube and Google Rescue and Jessica webcast, you can see that. And it was a really wonderful event. So we had the authors and the illustrators of this book come to the Downey school. And it was a live discussion with the authors and illustrators with one of our kindergarten classes. And it was live webcast across the nation and even to a school in Indiana. So there were like 600, I think, schools and libraries that were watching. And our kindergarteners got to ask questions. And they asked fantastic. So you should definitely take a look. It was really wonderful. And I want to thank Deb Gallagher for all of her efforts and Steve and our technology folks because they had to deal with the somewhat high-pressure, you know, logistics of figuring out how to do that.
Thirty thousand viewers.
Exactly. And particularly to thank Jen Shea, who is a teacher at Downey, because it was Mrs. Shea and her kindergarteners who communicated with the author. They were pretty persistent and we ended up being lucky, the lucky school. So thank you.
It should be a history.
It is. It is going to be a history.
Interesting.
Yes.
This is part of our program with public participation. Anybody here would like to have a comment or thoughts? We welcome you to do that. And we'd like to keep it to a couple of minutes and just identify yourself and your address. Anybody here would like to publicly participate in our meeting? Seeing none at the moment, we'll move on. Next item is discussion items. Capital maintenance budget process.
So I'm going to turn this over to Keith in a moment for this presentation. I don't have... You're just going to have to tell me to... I will look for you. So we thought it would be helpful tonight to talk a bit about the capital and maintenance budget process. And this is something that last spring we had committed to doing. There were some questions from the committee about sort of how we make decisions around capital planning. And so we're here tonight just to talk about that process. Take your questions.
I'm going to... Okay. So obviously, the process. The first thing I want to do, though, is to first frame this presentation up. I talked a little bit about three items that are interrelated concerning the capital budget. And they are the long-term capital budgets, what we call five-year capital budget, the annual capital budget, and the maintenance budget, which is added to the operating budget under the operations department. So these three areas are linked. The way these three areas are linked has to do with two things. Identifying capital needs and available funding. So the way we identify the capital needs, we use a bottom-up approach. Building, maintenance, and operations departments identify the major capital needs that we have, as we'll see later in the presentation. These are used to build the annual capital budget, which is then used to build and adjust the long-term capital budget. Does that make sense? The capital needs that are laid out in five-year capital plan mirror the annual capital budget. Basically, all the categories are the same. It includes things like roofing, water maintenance, HVAC, and things like that. The other area that links these three items together is available funding. Now ideally, if the town was able to fully fund the long-term capital plan, then the annual capital budget for the first year would equal year one of the long-term capital plan. Because they'd be in sync, would be fully funded. If the funding of the long-term capital plan falls short, though, then what we need to do is prioritize during next given year through the annual capital budget process, which is what we do every single year. What the maintenance budget does, though, with this, is that it not only helps to maintain the capital investments that we've already made, but it also has historically helped to subsidize a shortfall in capital because of the shortfall between old gas ports and long-term services. So that's how the three things are linked. A long-term capital plan is basically what I would call the ideal capital budget. It's a perfect word. It's the total amount of funding we would need to replace all of our capital items on an ongoing basis, other than the buildings themselves. And that's what we look for in the long-term capital plan. The way that's developed within the long-term capital plan is basically based on life cycle costs in for the larger areas like roofing, for instance. What we do is we take the total square footage of all the roofs, we multiply it by what we call unanticipated replacement costs, and then we divide that by the life cycle. So we're planning getting at least 25 years out of the roof. And so when you do that, you wind up with funding that you need each year for the side to replace your roof on a ongoing basis for the full... So we're going to use to the annual capital budget because we're dealing with that lesser funding. And so that budget process is happening all year long. As a result, our priorities are better... As a result, the priorities change during the course of the year. Basically, we live and breathe the capital budget all year long. And an example of this is like two weeks ago at a Sheen, we lost our air compressor. So we need to replace that. You know, a few weeks before that, we had a flood at the middle school. So we do our best to try to keep ahead of these things. But capital stuff is happening all the time throughout the year, which adjusts our priorities as we move through the budget. So the capital budget process itself consists of five steps. We gather a lot of information. We prioritize our projects. We estimate our costs. We identify available funding from the town. And then we finally finalize the significant capital budget to you through your approval. The information that we gather is multi-passive. We use filmings and grounds inspections, what's called the facility condition index, which I'll talk a little bit about. We use work orders, principal requests during the annual budget process, as well as we identify any current term initiatives that are going on. Now, filming grounds inspections. Our facilities are inspected basically using an outside antenna approach. Where we start with the grounds, we go to the fencing, the curbs, pavement, all that. Then we look at the building number. We'll look at the masonry, the windows, roofs. Then we look away into the building, down to the, basically, the HVAC systems and mechanical systems throughout the building. Building inspections are ongoing. We have a lot of inspections. The director of operations, Kenny Aries, and the system director, Greg Baldwin, do at least seven inspections, not seven, they at least do two inspections of all seven facilities during the course of the... They probably, in fact, do to do seven inspections. They're always in the building. But the building principals also participate in at least one of those visual inspections. And we use contractors to inspect various components of our buildings, as it says up there, boilers, rooftop units, roofs, emergency... You know, things, elevators, anything that can be had inspections happen. Because the building's a certain length and size. Our maintenance staff inspects our buildings regularly. And they're a great source of information, especially for maintenance staff that can give us heads up on whether or not they're going to be failing or changing the place, you know, in the next budget cycle. Our town insurance company also did an inspection. Mya, in front of any potential issues that we might see. Town departments also conduct inspections, including going to help fire departments as well as the building partners. So we do a lot of inspections, which is great. Now, the facility's condition index is a process that we use as part of the capital process to identify things that we may need to be replacing in the upcoming year. It's basically a system where we gather information, like each individual visual component. So it's not only like a full HVAC system, but say at the market jump, we actually have, you know, the boiler at the market jump, we have pumps and all the major components of that system. And we have... And we track things like agency and... We track things like life expectancy, replacement costs, current condition, the remaining life. Now, this is very useful information when we build a capital budget to be tracking this stuff. And the next slide is just another example of circulating pumps at the various schools. So we can keep a good eye on the major component systems using this system. The next piece of information we gather is through work orders. Principals, teachers, as well as all the operations staff can submit work orders. Maintenance staff schedule what we call preventative maintenance work orders for boilers, gym vacs, filters, oil pumps, and that sort of thing. This does an excellent job of ensuring the longevity of our building systems. The next slide is just an example of our program that we use. We use Udo for our building maintenance work order system. In one dimension that we hear is that if there's something that our maintenance staff can't do, let's say it's a plumbing work order, then this is... let's say it's a plumbing work order, then this system actually will send this to our plumbing contractor director. And we're able to get that worked done as quickly as possible through the system, which is great. This is also great information if you have, if we see repeated work orders for a particular area of the building or a particular unit. So that tells us that maybe we need to think about replacing that unit coming up. Principal request is also more information we receive. This is, we usually receive this during the annual budget process where when principal submit their request. Usually for program needs, for example, moving walls, adding electrical assets, things of that nature. And they're prioritized along with the operations requests coming in. I should note that, I should note that I have here Mr. Sean Devan, I believe holds the record for most walls moved in a building. But gosh, this is a close second. I think he has a couple more things. But that sounds flexible. Current town initiative. So we do work closely with the Energy Manager, Tom Fieldman, as you know. He's a great, he's a great person and he's great to work with. In the past two years, we were able to do two major energy projects with him as well as the green communities. Where we replaced all the heating controls at the Downey Martha Jones. As well as recommissioned those two buildings. And the way this basically works is we'll put up some capital, the town will match it, and then we get the down to the green communities. So Tom remains all of this, so he's always, you know, coming to me or Mike or whoever to get the funding to get this done. But ultimately, it's just a win point for everybody. We end up with a beautiful energy saving project. So it works. Next, we prioritize our projects. After all the information is gathered, we consider. We consider everything. We prioritize it. Of course, safety first, need second, and third in the course of addition as ideas come through. So we take those projects and we prioritize and we estimate the costs. So we send it out to vendors, get information back. Projects that's anticipated to be more complex, like the middle school elevator project last year. We may involve an architect or engineer to come and plan the, plan actually bid that project to us. Then we have that final funding from the town. We work closely with town officials to determine capital funding for the upcoming year. We also talked about this at the square and we talked about it on energy planning, which is great. We also speak with Pam Dukin, who's also at these meetings. Who's the town official, the town finance director, she's great to work with as well as Mike. I have, I must say, I have noticed that we still have the past year in the half. I'm not sure what changed. But the relationship between the town and the schools is really important.
I don't know what changed.
As you know, the main source of capital is free cash for the town. So that's why you might see the capital budget vary a little bit in the year of how much free cash is available. We also have something known as the capital reserve account in the town, which I call the district safety party. It's a great safety net for us. So if we were to have something like a cash drop at boiler failure, we'd be able to get the boiler fixed this year. You don't have to worry about it. So that's just great to know. After we get all our priorities in order and we look at the available funding that we had for that year, then we develop the capital budget and the capital budget and see anything school can approve. Some of the capital priorities for FY twenty coming up, and we're still in the process, so this is not an expensive list. But some of the items include the repair of front steps of Sheen, Deerfield, rear classroom step repair, family door fresh var replacements, replacing one of the seven Martha Jones, middle school windshield replacement, middle school unit deck phase one replacement, middle school HVAC second floor phase two, and some high school. Now as you can see from this list, Rochelle Middle School's in love next year. Because we anticipate that that building is going to be enough for a while. So we need to catch that one.
I sense the issues there because we just, I mean, that original building was built, I think, in the thirties.
Thirty-eight.
And we just had, potentially could have been a much worse situation with the infrastructure. I mean, what's your risk assessment on that building?
My risk assessment is, you know, that alerted us to, you know, the type of, I'm sure that's not the only type. And so what we'll do, we'll start investigating the other types and connect every building. Not that you know, Middle School had many different eras of buildings, but a thirty-eight building, if that happened, is something that will focus on some of the inspections for sure.
What's the age of the other? I mean, the other wing's modular.
Elsie. That makes thirty-eight, fifty-seven. So thirty-eight gets you up halfway. Fifty-seven gets you all the way to the library. Two thousand and one gets you the pink hallway that goes down toward the one twelve, one thirteen. Two thousand and ten gets you the, I know I missed something. Ninety, no, ninety-seven was the pink hallway. Two thousand and one is the modulars on the front. Two thousand and ten is the modulars in the back.
The risk assessment's quite different.
Like the Frankenstein.
We're also thinking very carefully about how we're investing in capital. Now, you may have noticed that Sheen, Deerfield, and Cannon are up there. And I know that there weren't any special references to me about those three buildings. But these to us are two safety issues that need to be, and I just want to assure you that we're going to be maintaining these buildings until soon they're not in the, so safety is a more priority to us. So we keep these buildings up. Now, capital budget first, we build the maintenance budget. As we've talked about, capital budget has historically been underfunded. And just to give you a little bit of what that means, because we did talk about the long-range capital plan. From this year, our request for the long-range capital plan is one point seven seven million to fund that ideal capital budget. We received eight hundred and sixty-seven. So there's a shortfall of like nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's why every year we're going to be in the capital budgeting process. So that if you have to prioritize with money, that's a very big expense.
Is your five-year outlook rolling? Do you roll every five years or is it?
We do, we run every five years. And we adjust them. We adjust them based on what's happening within the first year. That's where the building maintenance budget comes in. It helps the complete projects, their funds become available during the current year. Now, building maintenance budget line itself, I mean, the main purpose of that line is routine maintenance, of course. We also fund emergency or health and safety projects out of that line, as well as current needs and future needs that funds become available. And as you can imagine, I mean, routine maintenance, things like, it includes things like all boiler water treatment, hydromix, garbage, and things like that. And if emergency health and safety projects, these projects represent a majority of the overages in that budget. A good example is the air compressor that we just replaced. So that was an emergency item. We just had to do it. We have to fix things as things have to happen. Examples of these for last year were the replacement of three exterior staircase doors in the building last year. Like in the modules. So during one of the routine inspections that we did, we discovered that one of the staircases was in poor condition. We checked the other two, which were in similar condition. So we decided to replace all three of the staircases during last year. And that wasn't budgeted before, but that did come out in building maintenance budget because it's a safety issue. So we need to get that done. Also last year, we did plumbing and filter work to drive the, really drinking. And I want to say again, we take care of the safety parties very seriously. And we'll get those done in that upcoming year. Current needs, capital spending projects that might not be health and safety issues now, but they may become health and safety issues later on. Like for instance, if there's a torn carpet, then we try to repair it. And then it just keeps on degrading, of course, we may just decide to replace that piece of carpet, the carpet, the whole thing itself. Same with with a floor and type things. Also, program needs come up under current needs. Things like if we need electrical, like we see a lot of the science stuff going on, we need to change an electric somewhere, then we do that, but that's a point for later. Also, I added here, actually, on the building maintenance budget last year, the design work for the elevator. Now we need to get that work done immediately in order to have that bid out over the course of last year. So we had to put that under maintenance, even though the funding for the actual elevator came out this year. Under future needs, again, if funding become available, we looked at capital items that need periodic replacement from a capital list to see if we can check them off in this current year. Examples of this would include projects such as additional paving, maintenance, flooring, or even boiler replacement. That's a point in the budget. So that is the capital maintenance budget process. Any questions?
Can I just tease out one thing as I know you talked about this before? So this issue of the fact that the maintenance line and the operating budget sort of historically is overspent. And, you know, I think what that really reflects is what we was talking about before. The fact that the capital budget historically has been underfunded as compared to the needs. And so, you know, knowing that the needs always kind of exceed what we have budgeted. If for some reason, due to say turnover, I mean, or something that's underspent, towards the end of the year, money becomes available, we say, well, what will we spend that on? That would be a good investment that reflects the priorities that we've already identified. You know, and that's why we put it towards things like maintenance projects. We put it towards other things too, on occasion. It may be that there are like curriculum materials that we need or we know that we need new textbooks and whatever. If we can take care of it now, we don't have to have a budget increase for the following year to take care of it. So we think about all those things. But I think that maintenance is a place that we often do put that kind of money if that flexibility arises, because we know we have these needs and they are.
It's an easy go-to.
It's an easy go-to. Yeah, and it's not going, go away. And obviously that money, I mean, because school budgets are voted as bottom-line numbers, we have that kind of flexibility to spend down to zero at the end of the year. And that allows us to make those investments.
Any other questions? Is there, it's a little bit related to the earlier conversation. Is there anything big, let me ask another question. Is there anything big? Because you know, we get so much funding a year. There's, I get there's a lot of little things. But I guess, not today, but you'd interesting to know if there's anything big. If we're going to be at Thurston for a while, right? Is there anything big we need to be thinking about? Because now you're not able to do it with three thousand dollars. It's just one question.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good question. We are thinking about those kinds of things, definitely.
We also explore sometimes the town, is it likely to provide us with additional funding, capital funding from the old, we may be able to buy funding for that.
We're having some of those conversations now, like is there a big blaring project? And, you know, the town sometimes is able to say, well, rather than increase the bays, can we pick off some of these projects?
Right, that was the elevator, right? And they gave us money for the roof.
Yes, exactly. Or the network upgrade is another example of that. And we're having some conversations now. So one of the things on Keith's list was we need to, we need.
Phase one of the unit events?
Oh, yes, that. Phase one of the unit events, which is related to the middle school. So that's really thinking about how are we going to make sure the bay factory continues to function effectively for the long term. I was even thinking about paving at the high school. I mean, you know, that's like a hundred thousand dollar project. And, you know, so we're talking about is there a way to fund that kind of thing? Which is clearly about the high school, but also about community issues.
It takes a pressure off the team. So we're able to do more with the.
In the fields, so the town is strongly funded, like the turf. Is that something they fund as opposed to the, like, person?
Yeah, the person.
And that's another example, right? I mean, the place is going to have to be replaced on the multipurpose field fairly soon, I think. And that's part of the discussion as.
And they're already talking about it.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Hello, hello. Thank you for taking a minute to discuss this important topic tonight. So since last spring, we have been working carefully and properly as we designed the original policy that you voted into guidelines. So remember that the policy piece directed the district to then work on guidelines. So that work is now complete. And so tonight, what we've done is given you the document that the working group created. And the opportunity tonight is, I'm going to give you a quick little overview, but also to engage in some dialogue so that we can determine our next steps, which I have some recommendations. So what we could do. So as you recall, the district policy directed us to develop a working group and hear from multiple constituencies about this topic and then produce some guidelines. So I want to say that we were able to produce the most lovely committee ever. They were great. And we have a member here, so thank you, member, for coming. But I just want to kind of give you a sense of the scope of the different constituencies represented because I think that's a good starting place for this conversation. So Allison joined us. Just lovely. Wonderful to have Rosie's Assistant Superintendent Keith join us from the business, facilities, HVAC, big new carpet, all that stuff, buses. Ken Arias joined us from facilities. That's really, really, really an important constituency to think about for this topic. Deb Gallagher was our principal representative, the voice of the principals. Present about how does it really work in the schools on a day-to-day basis. And Eceo Corron, who's the food service director, attended every single meeting and was thoughtful and went back and did homework and came back. Because school food is obviously quite an important topic as well. Ellen Doe is our Downey school nurse. She represented the nurses. So Ellen and Deb are like our tag team, Downey group. Carol Lewis is our school committee connection. Holly Adrich is a parent. She's here tonight and she's awesome. And we had two other parents who are not here tonight. I'm not going to share their names because I didn't like, I didn't ask permission. We also had a student representative, a high school age student, and she was fabulous. And she had great. So I hope that just from kind of reviewing that, it gives you a sense of the scope of this topic and the importance of this topic, right? So that group met three times over the fall and produced the document that you have. It's a guidelines for the management of life-threatening allergies in the Westwood Public Schools. And Charlie, I hear your voice in my head sometimes, so I want to just let you know that Situate, Cambridge, and Nauset Public Schools are our foundational communities that we built out of. And one of the wonderful things about that important perspective is that because we're members of the same policy development group and it's an online policy manual, we have access to all the town public school policies on any topic that's searchable. So I reviewed many of them. These were the three best, recent, comprehensive. And then you can use them. So that's a really important reference point. So they formed our backbone. And what you can see is that the approach is essentially you go constituency by constituency and you achieve consensus on what the guidelines are for each working group people. So in this case, students, parents, school administrators, school nurses, teachers, food service, bus company, athletic director, custodian. And then you basically work and work and work until you have enough of a consensus that you can agree that these are our consensus-based agreements about what we are trying to do. This is not a perfect document and it's also built to be adjusted over time. So at the end, it says who to call if you have a question at a school, who to call if you have a question at the district. And it's a living document because this is a topic that evolves over time. There are also individual student needs and building type needs and district needs related to this topic. So different people would respond to this. The three themes for this document are clarity and consistency around roles and responsibilities. So who does what, what happens when it's a question, who do you go to, things like that. That's important. I would say consistency among the schools and communication proactively is another big theme. And probably the focus for this document for us as a district was just consistency across the different schools. And then this idea of building a culture of proactive planning so that you're not showing up the day before the field trip to say, is it okay if we go here? You're thoughtfully connecting with families, you know, in advance as much as is appropriate so that people can kind of problem solve together and brainstorm together. And we can build that culture and everybody wins. So that's the tone of the document. I do want to just say quickly that everybody has always worked in really good faith on behalf of kids in the district. And that was evident at the committee level, that people spoke up honestly and gave good feedback and questioned. And I think we have a nice outcome because of that. And this really is an opportunity to continue to improve, clarify, and get student voice into this. And I'm very appreciative that we were able to do that. So you have the details. If you have anything. So you have the details, if you have anything that is a specific question, I'm happy to answer it. Yes, Miss?
So as the mother of a child is now, yes, so two questions for you. In the field trip section, it talks about ensuring that the medication goes on the field trip. What about chaperones and ensuring that if a nurse goes, I mean, if a nurse isn't able to go on the field trip, that a teacher or a chaperone is, you know, trained to do the EpiPen, or is that in?
Yeah, that's in there, and so the language is something along the line of ensure that there's an EpiPen delegated, trained person on a field trip.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's a contingency for almost any possibility.
And do you know which responsibility that's under?
No, I can look for you in a second and tell you.
Maybe the nurse might remember.
Related to that is, what about kids who could be in China or in France or, you know, South America someplace?
So we did not address, like, the specific of every instance. So we have something that says, for example, it says, ensure proactive awareness of students with LTA's in planning all school-wide events. And then it says field trips, ensure that all lifesaving medications instructions are taken, right?
Right.
But to answer your question, I think we would have to figure out in an instance of that, what are the implications?
And it'll go deep. Our kids, if we have something, we can help whoever's doing the trip.
Yeah.
To beat the head or, you know, what we eat.
I think that's in the school.
You know, it's in the food.
So I think, we're happy to look to make sure we address what you're asking. I think it overlaps across multiple different jobs, and I think this idea under field trips of ensuring that all lifesaving medications is linked to the fact that there has to be someone delegated to give the lifesaving.
And then my second point, on the director of food nutrition services. Now, in full disclosure, I haven't looked in a long time, but when I went on the website to pull up the menu, and then, you know, there's the chart, the allergen chart, it didn't line up with the menu itself. So there were items on the menu that were listed that were not on the chart and vice versa. And I think just making sure there's a consistency there, and there maybe now, but that was a big problem first. You know, you just, you didn't know if the chicken nuggets were the same thing as the chicken dinosaurs, and it was confusing.
So we discussed that, and there are certain moments where you can see that, like, the food delivery truck arrives, and there's been a substitution of what the item is, and so the thing that we published doesn't match. And we talked about what the human kind of safety net is for that, from the nurses to the principals to calling parents. But what we tried to do to capture that is, we had something in here that says, you know, recheck routinely for potential food allergens so accurate ingredient information can be communicated with parents. I don't know that we are ever gonna get to a point where we can catch every unexpected change fast enough, or every single situation. But what we're trying to do is build a consistent awareness that they should check at least, you know, on a reasonable basis. And if it's drifting too much, then that's kind of, Keith would have to step in and say, you know, you have to do it legally, you have to do it. It is a moment in the calendar, we learn from parents that there are days when it doesn't match. But in almost every instance, there's been some attempt to get to the family to say, what's your second choice? And what's your third choice?
Mary, are you saying that it does, what's Keith's service on our menu, or are there two things within the soccer? Were there, weren't you looking at a line?
So I printed out, so I printed out the menu for April, right, and I looked at all the choices for April. And then I went to the website and said, okay, on April 3rd, it's these chicken nuggets. And on the website that has all of the allergen information, chicken nuggets were not listed. They weren't an option. So you didn't know what ingredients were on in the...
To double check them.
To double check them for the April 3rd menu. So it wasn't, I'm not sure it was a substitution issue. It was more just an inconsistency in what was published in the menu versus what the list of, you know, it just seemed to be two, from two different companies.
Yes, yeah.
So just making sure there's...
I don't think it would have to be finding as we call it. Yeah, so I guess from my perspective, guidelines are something we'd like to roll out to principals and all the different constituencies this winter and begin using and testing out and finding these kind of moments and saying, how do we refine this and refine that? Does that sound good to you guys from your perspective as community? I think that that's where we're going to be left if there, hopefully, we would be able to get...
Thank you for organizing that. And I think that things like this, I don't know if it's possible, maybe you might want to write a letter just to thank you and all these people. Just to acknowledge all this multiple, so, I mean, I think that's a great example. I don't know if, this is for the future, but I've always been concerned about health and safety in many years. But the one I'm talking about now is athletics. I used to be a youth hockey coach, and what I found out was when a kid falls down in the corner, the referee says, it's your job. My job, so your job is to go out on the ice. And, you know, it's not a doctor, we don't have trainers, even at the high school, trainers are at every practice hall. So we hired a doctor to teach the coaches. So he comes out and says, well, if the kid's bleeding, this is what you're gonna do. If the kid is unconscious and he's not, you know, he's not breathing, bleeding, breathing, and then finally, if he can't move, you know. And so he said, what am I getting myself into? This is, and, you know, lacrosse and football, these are all concussions, kids. So I don't know if it's worth beginning to get our own guidance to our coaches.
Well, I wanna clarify that all of our coaches received that training. You can't coach for us unless you have had that first aid training, if you're CPR certified, and all of that stuff. They're trained on the use of the AED, you know, you wouldn't allow people to coach for us at that point.
Yeah, sorry you went through that, because that sounds very stressful.
Well, we had to teach out on coaching, especially, I had no idea how, you know, what the potential was that in needing, at the basic level, you had to have people to know what to do. Well, thank you for...
You're welcome, and this is a ongoing project discussing, it's over by any stretch this evening, and I did reach out to the recreation department, and they're very interested in reading these and learning more about this topic as well, so it's been a nice community connection. So thank you for giving us the go-ahead, I mean, we'll start tomorrow.
Thank you.
The next is action items. First, I approve of the minutes from our last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I have one amendment.
One amendment.
So on the third page of the minutes under MSBA projects, about halfway down in that paragraph, it said we had budgeted 31 percent, we haven't budgeted anything, I would say we had, we anticipated, maybe even hoped for would be better, but we haven't budgeted anything, so.
We have a motion to accept that amendment, second, okay, I'll also pay to change the... Okay, on the overall minutes, we have a recommendation to approve it, a second, I'll approve the minutes themselves. Okay, our next item is the China trip extension.
So you previously approved this particular trip to China. But as you can read in the memo here, there was a proposal to add an additional day of travel to that trip. And it's because the trip organizers have offered this opportunity at no cost to extend the trip by a day and participate in this one-day U.S.-China high school speech signing. It was sponsored by Primary Source, which is a fantastic organization that we deal with. So I think it is an exciting opportunity. I'll accept the extension.
Mr. Brooke, are the Zena, they're gonna visit the Terracotta Warriors?
Uh, I, well, I have to say, I can't guarantee that, but I would imagine. It would seem like a big miss to not do that, so.
I'd give them about half a day to Beijing, the Great Wall, the Suzie, they let them have these things.
I'll check on that.
The next item is the Model UN overnight trip.
Yes, so we've approved a lot of trips, the teens' Model UN people are traveling all over. Having a lot of success, I understand, so the information is right there in your packet. This trip, it's only to MIT, but it involves an overnight stay, which is why it's being brought to your... I'll vote to accept the Model UN overnight trip, second.
And is any questions, there are chaperones from the teachers of the overnight trip or...
It's listed here, so it's Chris Hilton, who is the advisor, and then Susan Gialca, who's a parent of one of the students in the Model.
Vote on this.
I didn't put this in here, but they, one trip that you did approve fell out, and this basically replaces that. There was a trip to UMass that the organizers were not doing a good job of, and so Chris, Mr. Hilton asked to swap this out. So this effectively takes the place for a trip that you have already...
Do you feel like when the kids do this, to get like a 200-word report on what they learned, what they got out of it?
I can, yes.
So that'd be nice, we could share, maybe...
I would love to have them come and show, they did a really nice kind of event here in the building where I got to participate in a Model UN event. It was really pretty exceptional.
Maybe they could speak first, but, or maybe there's something writing for other kids and don't go on it, maybe be a benefit. But I think we already approved this, okay, next item.
Okay, so some exciting news here. Yeah, so Tika Pat to Mrs. Lewis, who said at the last meeting that she would pursue some funding for J-Term. It's very exciting, as we talked about last time, because we didn't have an accurate understanding of the cost of J-Term when we budgeted for this year. We're a little short, and so this is going a long ways for spilling that gap. And so we have received a $5,000 donation from Dedham Savings and a $2,500 donation from Needham Savings, which I think is because President of Dedham Savings reached out to Needham Savings and asked if community banks, they could kind of work together on this. So because they are of a substantial amount, we need to vote to approve those gifts. And though we technically don't need to vote on this, I do wanna mention that we also have a company called Looters Environmental, out of Needham, I believe. And they kind of unsolicited every year send us a $150 donation where they say to use it in any way that we think would benefit students. And I got that check today, it's Looters Environmental. A loo-er, oh, yeah, like a lawn service, right? Yeah, a laundry and scrub care company. And so we certainly appreciate that gesture and that ongoing support, and I got that letter today, and I thought, let's put that in the J-Term kitty as well. So we have three gifts, Dedham Savings, Needham Savings, and... Over to the back.
Just, who would make the most to support this, accepting the gift, second.
Obviously, we'll send thank you letters to all of those.
Also, Carl, thank you so much for jumping in. I think that is, I don't know whether we can get into this, but the J-Term thing is so, we're doing a lot of innovative things. I think there are people out there who want to fund learning what we've done, you know, where we've rated up and shared with other groups. And I think, I don't know if it's possible to, to see if anyone is interested in funding Westwood's sharing what we've learned, all the detailed stuff, going into planning it, all the evaluations, I think other towns might like it. I think somebody might want to fund us to share what we've learned without losing up a lot of time.
We have them sharing for free, I would say, right now. So a couple of weeks ago, we actually had a team of administrators and teachers from Grafton, New York, approaches, and they came and they spent half a day here and met with us, and they had already done some research online about the program. And we met with them and talked about our experience and kind of gave them some advice. The best part of the day was that the students just went into the library and said, hey, I'm looking for some students who will come talk with these people. Anybody available right now, and probably, I don't know, 12 to 15 kids? So, you know, it ran simple, came on in, and we just let them answer questions, and it was fantastic to hear what they had to say.
I think we did ask if the media center could share with us the one presentation. If they had 10 of them and sent it out. But, you know, I think if there are parents who have a little spare time to wanna be on committee, because they did so much evaluation right there, it's just a matter of putting it into a document, you know, and say, this, we'd like to share this, and to raise some money that way, and other innovative things that we just heard about tonight, the coding. If we're the coding, why don't we get a grant to support it, you know, so anyway, that's, thank you so much for reaching out.
You're very welcome. The, I'll plug in, the community banks are just that, they're all about communities, and our reputation as a school district precedes us in made. So I know there are other banks out there.
And I think that you, this paper will be good, too.
Yes. Totally.
Wait, it's going in the paper? I didn't sign off on that one.
The next item, appointment of Supreme, I got...
Supreme Court.
We're not opening up after you.
The Supreme Court representatives for the collective bargaining team, well, the school committee representative. Giuseppe's gonna give us her many years of experience, but I think we'd like Tony maybe to join and learn from the experience you gained. There are a lot of personal things. The second, the new search for a urgent business finance search committee, I've asked Carol if you would be willing to. Thank you for helping out. Do business layers on reports, any things like... Sorry. Any, I just have one thing, Tony and I have been sitting in on this group, it's just a heads up for people. The town is beginning to revise its 2,000 health, 2,000 plan for the town. And these are the subjects that we're gonna be writing out, if anyone has an interest in these, if they're looking for input. Land use, town centers, housing element, economic development, natural and cultural resources, community facilities, open space and recreation, transportation, resilience and sustainability, so.
Where did this list come from?
This is the town has just appointed a committee to start planning, developing a Westwood plan in these areas. The last time it was done was 2,000. So there will be people going over public hearings, meetings, asking for... But what this document supposedly is used for is for committees in the town, selectmen, all of these, to use this as a reference in their plan. But just a heads up that that's happening, anybody interested in these topics, they're about to be worked on, revised and updated.
I actually just, this evening, got an email from the folks who are working on the community facilities report, asking about meeting the school department, and they would also like to meet with some school committee, we're talking about our building needs, and so that they can incorporate that in the summary and stuff.
Any other updates for any committees that people were working on, subject of this?
Well, we did receive, I just wanna say, we did receive correspondence from Citizen of the Day. I'm sure you all saw the study, groundbreaking study about start times. We talked about this being kind of a goal two years ago, so I think it's a future meeting, another topic in about that topic.
Sure. And we'll talk about that again on the channel.
Anything else? Okay, we are now gonna have an executive session to discuss some things that are related to collective bargaining that just the committee will be... Thank you, everybody, for coming, appreciate it.
I think you've done a good turn to the next session.
Do I have a...
I'll make that motion.
Second. Adjourn.